Due to assignments, Jack retired out of the Pentagon and the force structure branch. And because of that, he has a couple of part-time jobs now. He works in Qatar, Qatar if you will, in the Middle East redesigning their force structure of their army. They're eighty-second man over here. And also, he works with the Home Guard of Ireland, what a difference, and is redesigning their home guard there. Jack's been a longtime friend of mine, and when he comes home, he preaches, and he's shared the gospel all around the world. And I'd like to invite him up to say our prayer, and then I'll do the pledge.
Please rise.
It's an honor to be here, and I'm not preaching, but I want to read one of my favorite verses to you. Says, "From everyone who has been given much, much will be required; and to whom they entrusted much of him, they will ask all the more." And that's what you are here is, you've stepped up and said, "Send me." Please bow. Dear Lord, it's with humble hearts, we thank you for our blessings tonight, Lord. We thank for the opportunity to be here and to lead and serve this county. Lord, we thank for the freedom that allows us to worship and speak and live in accordance with our own convictions, and we thank you for the opportunities that shape our dreams and the strength to pursue them. Lord, we know that blessings come with obligations, and we're called to be good stewards of all that we have. Lord, we lift up our commissioners tonight, Lord. We ask that you grant them wisdom, discernment, and clarity as they lead our community. Lord, may their decisions be guided by justice, integrity, and a sincere desire to serve those in this county. Lord, bless them with strength in times of challenge and peace in moments of uncertainty. May their leadership bring unity, prosperity, and well-being to all, and may they reflect your love as they serve our county. For it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Be drawn with this flag, your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service as well to our country. If you will, please press yes on your panel to record your presence tonight's meeting. At this time, if you'd like to speak before the county commission, this is your time to speak. If you're here for a rezoning public hearing, that will be a little bit later on tonight. But if you want to speak to the county commission on any other subject, this time will be your time to speak. See you step to the back podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Seeing none, we will close public comment period, and we'll move on to the steering committee. Commissioner Fields.
Mr. Mayor, the steering committee of the county commission had a regular session on Thursday, June the fifth, twenty twenty-five, and entered Congress room at the conclusion of the minutes meeting. I move that they be received and filed.
Got a motion, second. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye. Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Fields.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, everyone has a copy of the agenda. If there are no changes, I move that it be adopted as the venue.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Consent agenda, Commissioner Fields.
Mayor, we do have one consent agenda, so I'm voting twenty-five, day six, day one, just to establish a speed limit on Congress Road at twenty-five miles an hour. I move that I be approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Special recognition at this time, Commissioner Wendell Marlowe.
This time, I'd like for all the representatives of the West Wilson Middle School softball team, come on up here with me. Coaches, coaches, too. I'll just get on both sides over here. A few years ago, I was coaching football on the same field that these girls play softball on, but it wasn't green. It was brown, and it was hard. And that's one of my students. He didn't get in much trouble, though. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring the two, excuse me, the 2025 West Wilson Middle School State Softball Champions. Whereas, West Wilson Middle School softball team enjoyed an outstanding season, becoming the 2025 State Softball Champions. And whereas, the 2025 record of 23 and 1 shows their hard work and dedication throughout the season. And the team has a combined three-year record for the eighth graders of 73 and 3, with two state championships and one state runner-up. Statistics for the 2025 season include a team batting average of 42 percent on base percentage of almost 51 percent, team fielding percentage of almost 96 percent, with 12 home runs and 70 stolen bases. Whereas pitching statistics for 2025 season included an ERA of 3.53 and 91 strikeouts. The team outscored their opponents 63 to 13 in postseason games. Whereas, the drive and determination that the team brought home with wins, the area championship against Mount Juliet, 11 to 5, sectionals against Upperman, 13 to 1, second round against Dixon County, 22 to 4, sectional finals against White County, 9 to 3, state semifinals against Seagull, 17 to 2, and finally, the state championship against Sadi Daisy, 4 to 3. Whereas players on the team include Aubrey Ryman, Abigail Brand, Bell Fiedelson, Hannah Stewart, Jaden Mish, Lexi Shoup, London Loy, Miley Norman, Olivia Scarborough, Ava Evans, Avery Ramsey, Emerson Littrell. Okay, thank you. Jalen Reasonover, Jules Corwin, Callie Wiggins, Leela Jackson, Maddie Kessler, Miley Hartless, Tessa Baker, Parker Barnett, Emerson Dindo, Emma Miller, Elaine Spence, Madeline Frye, McKenna Shoup, and Shayla Tibbs. Whereas, coaches for the team include Ricky Hammons, Sean Stewart, Shelby Clifton, and Hunter Arnold. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize West Wilson Middle School softball for their outstanding season and offer our support and encouragement to the team as they continue to compete, some of them at West Wilson Middle School.
All in favor, say aye.
Okay, one of the coaches come up here and talk.
I'm not sure what to say, but what you guys need me to say.
You'll do it again next year.
My name was Lexi Shoup.
Wow.
She told me to say that. Now, thank you guys very much for recognizing these girls. They work very, very hard. I mean, all these girls, can't say enough about them. I'm gonna miss a lot of them. Luckily, they're right here at Mount Juliet High School, and I get to go watch them. So, thank you to the coaches for everything that you guys did, and especially the parents. So, thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
This goes to the school.
Got you.
Okay. I guess I could give it to my son, huh?
You can. It's probably in better hands with him.
Yeah, it's... Y'all girls didn't know that that's my little boy, right?
Mr. Marlowe.
Oh, yes.
This is the big Mr. Marlowe.
I'm the old Mr. Marlowe. Big, that's not the right word. Okay, girls, as you file out, please tell everybody who you are.
My name is Hannah Stewart, and I played second base for the team.
Awesome.
Go ahead.
My name is London Loy, and I played centerfield.
My name is Lexi Shoup, and I played third base.
My name is Tessa Baker, and I played second base.
My name is Shayla Tibbs, and I play outfield.
My name's Lila Jackson, and I was a designated hitter.
My name's McKenna Shoup, and I play outfield.
My name's Maddie Kessler, and I played outfield.
My name's Abigail Brand, and I play first.
My name's Ava Evans, and I play catcher.
My name's Jules Corwin, and I played second.
My name is Parker Barnett, and I play third.
Good girl.
My name's Madeline Frye, and I played outfield.
My name's Emerson Dindo, and I'm a catcher.
My name's Emma Miller, and I played shortstop.
My name is Emerson Littrell, and I played right field.
My name is Miley Hartless, and I played outfield.
Sean Stewart, assistant coach.
Shelby Clifton, assistant coach.
Congratulations again, and thanks, Mr. Marlowe, for bringing those to our commission meeting tonight. At this time, we'll have a public hearing. We have two rezonings tonight. Did I hear a motion to go out of session? Second, all in favor, say aye. This time, we'll ask Christopher Lawless to come forward and speak on the two rezonings.
Public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, June 16th at 7:00 PM or thereafter in the county commission room of the Wilson County Courthouse. The following applications have been made by property owners David Rar, Brenda Rar, and Tammy Woolpool to rezone property from A1 Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial. The property contains approximately 6.97 acres and is located at 1928 Murphysboro Road and is further referenced as parcel 13 on the Wilson County Tax Map 103. Your second request is the application made by property owner Gary Hall doing business as Hall Enrichment Group LLC requesting to rezone property from R1 Rural Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. The property contains approximately 2.5 acres and is located at 1635 Highway 109 North and is further referenced as parcel 13 on Wilson County Tax Map 70. A copy of these requests have been on file in the Wilson County Planning Office, and inspection of these cases are, can be done during regular business hours. Anyone wishing to comment on either of these requests is requested to attend the meeting.
Anyone here to speak on either one of these properties, if you are, step forward, state your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes to talk.
Hi, my name's Jason Huffman. I live at 1660 Martha Leeville Road, which is a property that joins the 1635 Route 109. So, I'm, you know, I, my property joins his, that property. I'm not for this, obviously. When I purchased this property 13 years ago, I, I looked at all the properties surrounding me, 10, you know, five to how, five property, five to 10 properties deep on this. They were all residential at the time. And then today, it doesn't make much sense. It's all, all the properties are residential around it, across from 109, up and down 109. Yes, there's a landscaping business, maybe three, four properties down, that it seems to me that's still zoned residential last time I looked, so I'm not sure what's going on with that. But everything else is residential. It's, there's a lot of open land, there's a lot of properties that have a lot of land. My property has a pond on it, so I'm concerned about any kind of runoff that would, you know, a commercial property would put on us. I'm concerned that it'll decrease the value of my property because of the activity there. We have a really quiet property, you know, with the pond on it, you know, we bought it for that reason. I think it'll devalue all the residential properties surrounding it. So, it seems to me that the only people that, or the only entity that this is going to benefit is the landowner, the current landowner. I've seen no proposals on any grand scheme to do anything good with the property, other than it'll raise the value of their property. They have several people interested in the property for commercial use. I've seen no, no plans on making an improvement to the community, so it just concerns me, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on either one of these properties?
Hello, I'm Tanya Denny. I am the realtor that's got the Hall's property listed there on Highway 109. And we have had the property listed for a good little bit. We've had several commercial businesses contact us, kind of low-key businesses, nothing, not like a restaurant, anything like that. Of course, it's not zoned for that, obviously, and there's not sewer there. So, we're looking at it being approved for the C1 zoning that they are asking. Again, just something low-key, we've had like a contractor's office contact us, I think we had a dog grooming, a woodworking, things like that. The property two tracks down from us on the same side of the road, that's the west, that's owned by the West family, that's the landscaping place. It is zoned interstate commercial, is my understanding, so what they're doing there, you know, they can. And then there's a property on, on the other side of the road, down just a little bit, that is in the county that was residential, and it has been rezoned to C3. Now, that property was in the future land use for interstate commercial, so I understand that. But that's what we're asking, is for the county to consider C1 zoning for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on either one of these properties?
Hi, I'm Tammy Woolpool. We're one of, I'm one of the owners of 1928 Murphysboro Road. We currently own the property, basically if you're looking at it from the left and behind it both, and we're just wanting to get it zoned commercial, to kind of go along with the property that we have currently, because we're kind of running out of room and just hoping to expand a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Sandy Hoffman, property owner of the other property we were talking about before, the one on 109. I just wanted to add one thing. Really, the main thing that concerned me in general is 109. I think everybody here knows that is a dangerous road, and the section from one, like Martha Leeville up a little bit, maybe half a mile, there is a lot of residential. There might be a few commercials sprinkled in up further on the other thing. But for all of us that live on Martha Leeville, we cannot turn in and out of, on 109. I was here in January at the meeting they had on that, that Clark Boyd held. I mean, you're risking your life, and to add more commercial properties before, like, it's planned out and thought out with more lights, so that we aren't taking our life in jeopardy every time we have to turn out in that middle median, and your car shakes with the big trucks going by, and I think with all these commercial properties, not all these, but the ones, this one in particular, or any that want to go in that area, it's just going to be more traffic, more trucks pulling in and out. And I just feel like there has to be a better plan that's thought out, maybe wait till we get a light on Martha Leeville. I believe it's coming in a couple of years when they finish some development. But I just think the safety issue of 109 needs to be thought of. And of course, as any property owner, you don't want a commercial property right, you know, backed up to your property. You know, we do have a couple acres there, which you mentioned, we have a pond, we get all kinds of wildlife, we have a baby fawn right now. And those residential properties that are between our, you know, between us and 109, that's kind of like a buffer for, for the wildlife, and, you know, obviously, we want our privacy and are worried about, you know, how much our house is worth someday when we go to sell it. But we've lived there for almost 13 years, and, you know, we've obviously seen a lot of changes in that area, because I'm really worried with the Walmart coming, what that's going to do. But like I said, 109 is just a concern, and I think the less commercial in some sections, my section, would be great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment period on the rezoning and go back into session if I hear a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. All right, Christopher.
All right, the first request you all are considering is the application that was made by David Rar, Brenda Rar, and Tammy Woolpool to rezone property from A1 Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial. Again, this is 6.97 acres located at 1928 Murphysboro Road. This request for rezoning was submitted to the city of Lebanon as it is within their urban growth boundary on March 25th, 2025. It received an unfavorable recommendation at that March 25th meeting. Additionally, I just want to point out that they did go to city council. You all do not have to consider the city council request, but I'm going to let you know what they did. On May 6th was their first reading, May 20th, they had their second reading. At the May 20th, 2025 meeting, the city council of the city of Lebanon did amend their land use plan from low-density residential to high-density, high-intensity commercial zone, which is CI interchange commercial in their zoning designation. They received a favorable recommendation to amend the land use plan in that. What you all are considering is just the planning commission's recommendation, which was a recommendation of denial at the March 25th meeting.
Commissioner Evans, it's in your district.
Thank you, Mr. John. For those that aren't familiar with this location, this is the very top Four Mile Hill, out 231 South. It's the All About Holidays store. They own some property between, right next door to it, they're just asking to have this rezoned so they can expand operations. They're bordered by their own property on two sides. They're bordered by 231. On the other side, and on the north side, they're bordered by some utility property. Out of everything that we have ever rezoned, this makes more sense than everything. But across the road from them, there's the, the old junkyard that's been there forever. You go down just a little bit farther, you got two rock quarries and an asphalt plant. So, this is the brightest spot on Four Mile Hill. So, based on the city of Lebanon's, city council recommendation and common sense, I move that we approve this request.
Any discussion? Commissioner Hall?
Can you tell us why the Lebanon Planning, or Planning Commission gave negative recommendation? What was their reasoning?
At the time, the Lebanon gave a negative recommendation, it was because it was not uniform with their land use plan. Any recommendation that comes out of Planning Commission is going to be before they consider that. To kind of give you all, if it's solely in Wilson County, you all consider the rezoning and the land use amendment at the same time. When it's cross-jurisdictional like that, we don't have those timeframes to line up like that.
I can add a little bit more to that, if that's all right with y'all.
Absolutely.
There was a little bit of informational snafu, and so the applicant was not at the meeting, and I wasn't either. So, that's, that's why they got a negative recommendation.
That was not in my minutes.
Any other comments or questions concerning this before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous. Christopher.
All right, the second request was the one made by Gary Hall doing business for Hall Enrichment Group LLC to rezone the property from R1 Rural Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. The property contains approximately 2.5 acres and is located at 1635 Highway 109 North. This request for rezoning was submitted to the city of Lebanon Regional Planning Commission on March 25th, 2025, as it falls within their planning jurisdiction and is being sent to the Wilson County Commission with an unfavorable recommendation for denial. Additionally, as an additional point of information, the applicant requested the city council of the city of Lebanon to modify their land use plan, changing it from low-density residential to low-intensity retail service and convenience goods area. On May 20th, 2025, the applicant obtained a positive recommendation to amend the city's land use plan, which is commercial mixed use, is what they classify that as. The applicant has formally requested the Wilson County Commission evaluate the application at the scheduled June 16th, 2025 meeting.
Commissioner Rich, it's in your district.
Thank you. In consideration of this property, it is north of the landscape hardscape place located on 109, two properties down. When I'm looking at rezoning in this instance, I'm looking at what benefits does it bring to the community? With the hardscape landscape business, it was something that was planned, we knew what was coming in, and it has been very beneficial to the community. This property, I have to agree with the city of Lebanon planning on this at this time. It is just to change it to commercial, there is no plan of what could go there, and one of my biggest fears that goes into that would be, hey, are we putting in another smoke shop? Are we putting in a liquor store? Anytime that we're considering a property like this, I would absolutely like to know that it benefits our community and doesn't cause a detriment. So, because of that, I'm going to agree with the city planning, and I'm going to have a motion for denial of this going to commercial.
I got a motion to deny and a second. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor to deny, say aye. Any opposed? Let the record reflect it was unanimous as well. Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Report for the minutes committee, Commissioner Fields.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the minutes committee of the Wilson County Commission had a regular session on Monday, June the 5th, 2025, and entered Congress room at the courthouse. We would like to begin the conclusion of the education committee, of which it did. Everyone has a copy of those minutes, I move that they be received and filed.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Reading of the minutes.
Most is against the majority.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. I do have to mention tonight that Mr. Robert Spickard to, would be added to the Gladeville Utility District Board again. No actions required by you, just that I read it into the minutes. Mr. Goodall, anybody to be added to the notary list?
Good.
Do I hear a motion to approve the notaries?
No.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Judicial commissioners, at this time, I'll turn it over to Commissioner John Gentry.
The committee met under as well. Up with two recommendations. I'm going to introduce Mr. Corey Buehler to introduce these individuals.
My first recommendation's going to be Todd Gibson. He is currently a part-time commissioner. There's a conflict with him tonight since we met last Thursday. He just texted me about 10 minutes ago saying that he had a conflict. He's been here for a year in July. I would make a recommendation that we extend his term until next July 26th for one year.
And I'll make a motion to that effect.
I got a motion, a second. Now, any discussion from anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Buehler?
Second gentleman I have is Kyle Jacobs. He is a, will be a new part-time commissioner. We interviewed, he did very well. I am fully committed that he will understand the process going forward, once we get him in and get him trained. I'd like to recommend him, contingent on his background, coming back for a term from July 1st of this year to July 1st of 2026.
And I'll make a motion to that effect as well.
Motion, second. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Buehler. Mr. John, anything else?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Report from the emergency management committee, Commissioner Bernard.
EMA met on Tuesday, June 3rd, 5:30 upstairs in conference room. Minutes, you need to pack it. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Emergency management director's report, Director Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor, county commission. County Commission, our call volume right now has increased from this time last year. You know, it's just one of them years. We've been busy for the last several months with training and exercises, and most of these involve other departments working together. And so far, you know, we had really good turnout and, um, from all these. So, just know that we're still doing a collaborative effort between all agencies and departments. Right now, I'm three people short. We did open up applications. I have more than enough to fill those slots. And hopefully, within a couple weeks, those slots will be filled back. Most of the outages were people moving off to where they had come from originally, back home. So, outside of that, they didn't want to leave, but they decided that for their families. So, that concludes my report. Unless you have any questions for me.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz?
Law Enforcement Committee met on Thursday, June 5th, in upstairs conference room. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Sheriff's Report, Sheriff Robert Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, your reports in your package. Pretty much the call volume is pretty much on par for this time of year. The total for the whole year is actually up, but this past month has actually been down a little bit. The number of people in jail is, is pretty much leveled off right now. I just want to remind everybody that there's three, we got several, few hundred beds that's empty right now because of personnel. And, but in saying that, Joey mentioned his, I mean, people, he was short. We're, we're actually two, two people short right now as far as corrections, but we haven't, we hadn't created new positions yet for the, for the expansion of the jail we done two years ago. So, that's something we need to address probably here in the future. Work bus staying busy. They stay pretty much, they, they're everywhere this time of year, and we've got a lot of civic organizations, and they're keeping them busy. Joey mentioned, he mentioned a lot of training going on between all agencies. There is a lot of that. We done one last week out on, on the lake, recovery operation training with several, several different agencies. And it, a lot of it's, it went well. And most time during the summer, that's when we try to get a lot, we try to get all of our training in for the year. So, we're real busy in training right now. That concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee met, excuse me, May the 27th at 6:00 PM in the meeting room. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Director of Schools Report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell.
Good evening. You do have my report also in front of you. Some congratulations. Do want to mention you have the names of each school representatives of valedictorian slute, twos, class 2025. Graduation is complete and excellent ceremonies by all schools. Also, you have the names of students from each of our high schools that received the Pepsi-Cola Scholarship. It's an annual scholarship. It's a partnership we have with Pepsi-Cola Bottling Company. And I want to give a congratulations to Chuck Whitlock. He is our county athletic director slash school health coordinator. He has been recognized by the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association as a certified athletic administrator. To receive that honor was a rigorous test, a evaluation of his, of his background, his contributions of our programs. And we're, we're excited to have someone to be recognized for that and certified and glad to have him on our team. Also included, you recognize Wes Wilson Middle School State Champions in softball this year. We included all of our spring wrestling, middle school track, high school track, and the names of everyone that won and, and were state champions. Did give you some information, send your report on third grade retention. I will tell you that only 71 of our third graders had to go to summer school, that was the only option. So, we're excited about that. And summer school is in session, over 1,000 students, and it's going well. I've visited a couple of sites, and it's going really well. End of year enrollment numbers, you have those. Just to note, we're expecting 158 more freshmen than we graduated seniors. So, so that is a trend. Our enrollment is leveling off a little bit, not seeing what we did two or three years ago. But we will be watching it closely as registration opens up here shortly, July the 8th. And you have some of that information. If you, if you have people moving into your district, sometimes they'll reach out to Commissioners and have given you a little information about that. Construction project update, Central Pike is going along well, and Legato Elementary will be, we are expecting to open August 1st with that building. We've seen the, the road work doing, being done there now. Once that's completed, in front of the school, they'll be moving to 109, putting up a traffic signal. That permit came through, and go ahead and get that done. And right now, it may, it may be midnight before we take over, but we're pushing and they're pushing, a lot of work's going on, and we do think we will be in session, that new building, on August 1st. Last thing I have, Ms. Baxley's back there, just want to publicly thank her. She, this will be her last few days with us in a great career. I can personally tell you she's been a great benefit to me in, in my role the last two or three years, and she's been a great benefit to you too, and I know you know that. But, but a lady that has represented your county, our schools, with honesty, integrity, respect, and grace every day with everybody she encountered. Ms. Baxley, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Baxley, I would also like to thank you. I just know from, from our side and your ability to communicate, your clarity that you have provided, and just the feeling that you've given us and know that we're in good hands, has been tremendous. Professionalism is at the highest level with you, and just, I appreciate you, and I know all y'all do all the hard work, but we felt very comfortable and thankful to have you in that spot. So, thank you. Report from the Buildings Committee, Commissioner Weathers?
Commander Ford?
Act Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs? Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze?
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Glover?
No report.
Broadband, Commissioner Franklin?
No report.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Brown?
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Ri, uh, Dow?
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Costley?
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith?
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner McFarland?
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Gentry?
Judicial Committee, man on 12, 10, the Minnesota, yeah, making mostly decisions.
Any discussion, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Legislative Ad Hoc, Commissioner Costley?
No report.
Plan and Zoning, Commissioner McFarland?
No report.
Yes.
We did meet last Thursday, the minute.
They're under desk. They're under desk.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Rules, Commissioner Keith?
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs?
Urban Type Facility Board, met on June 5th, in your packet. Minutes are in your packet, they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Financial Director, report, Mr. Aaron Maynard?
We had a budget meeting just a few minutes before we came in here, and of course, I'd emailed out earlier today some changes that we had primarily from going over the rosters with the various departments. There's also a substitute, which you'll see, you'll get to later when we do resolutions, appropriations resolution, which really controls the appropriation to the various departments. Want to thank the Budget Committee for, and the County Commission for all their hard work on the budget, and I really don't have anything unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any question, Mr. Maynard? Do I motion to approve his report?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe?
Budget Committee met May 20, May 27, May 28, and June 5th. Minutes in your packet, I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolutions, Commissioner Marlowe?
Okay, Resolution 25-6-3, the tax levy in Wilson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 shall be 1.9089 on each $100 of taxable property.
Any discussion or questions? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
Resolution passes.
And I have misplaced number four.
It is the budget.
It's the budget.
Yeah. I know, but I didn't, I didn't bring it up here. I'm trying to prove something.
Just promised to give it back.
Put the warnings in the packet and make a motion on it.
Yeah. Resolution 25-6-4, a resolution making appropriations for the various fund departments.
Need a motion?
Subvert.
I need a motion first?
We got it.
Oh, wait, second?
You got it.
I got both of them, okay. Do we read now that before we substitute, or do we substitute and then read?
No, just make a motion, substitute what we did tonight earlier.
Okay.
I move we substitute what we did tonight to what we had earlier.
Got a motion, a second. Now, before they vote?
Whoever made the motion and second needs to accept that. You did what?
And so, what we did was, the budget that you had, that you looked at, that we approved first, then tonight, we had a few corrections that had to happen, and that's what happened to Budget Committee. And so, we just substituted that on those, okay? And so, that's what you just substituted. So, it's really the same budget outside of those five or six numerical corrections that needed to happen. So, I got a motion and a second now. And before I can vote, my employees need to read something.
You do the 56 that need to acknowledge something.
So, I'll start with Commissioner Breeze, and then let everybody else echo.
Pursuant to TCA 55112 and TCA 124101A, I, Lauren Breeze, do hereby publicly acknowledge the following. Because I am employee of Wilson County Finance, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted upon. However, declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligations and my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
I have that, and Commissioner Breeze, any other employees? So, just say you.
I have a conflict of interest.
Okay.
I concur with State and Commissioner Breeze, are you?
Okay. Okay.
I agree with Commissioner Breeze.
Mr. Clark, okay?
I concur with Commissioner Breeze.
Okay.
Enough.
Okay, Commissioner Hall.
I do.
So, I have Mr. Costley, Mr. Hall, Mr. Clark, Mr. Evan, I'm Mr. Hobbs, excuse me, not ever Mr. Evans, Mr. Jones, Mr. Keith, and Ms. Breeze. Anyone else? Okay. Now, for discussion. Commissioner Kurtz?
I know we're voting on the budget, and I'll probably be on an island by myself like I am most times. I don't think our commission did enough to explore all the options that we needed to explore to take care of our employees, and I don't think this budget adequately takes care of the employees and the pay that they need to make. Raising the table 4% wasn't what we discussed back when we approved an $84 million bond. And I'd just like to state that I will be against this budget based on solely that we didn't take care of our employees.
Anything else, anybody?
I agree.
Okay.
We've not done enough, and we're going to have to look into the future, next year. We keep saying next year, we keep saying next year.
One thing I want you to take into consideration is, you know, and I speak particularly about the Sheriff's Department because that's kind of where I know and where I came from, but all county employees are, are doing their jobs out there, and we're not rewarding them for doing their jobs. Not too long ago, we had several of our deputies that were forced to take a life. There's not many people sitting here that know that feeling, and that's something that some of them are going to have to deal with the rest of their life. And what we pay them is not enough for that feeling that they'll always have to live with. So, I want you to take that in consideration when we start to look at our employees.
Anyone else, anybody? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Hall? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
22, yes, 2, no, and 1 abstention.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-6-5, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education budget amendment 25-15.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-6-6, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for line items, transfers, and WEMA.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-6-7, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for line items, transfers, and the Sheriff's Department.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-6-8, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from the general fund and other fund balances to various line items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-6-9, approving and accepting the Homeland Security Grant.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-6-10, accepting a grant on the 2025, 2026 litter grant program.
Discussion, discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-6-11, to increase the litigation taxes for General Session Court in Wilson County.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24 and 1.
24 and 1, resolution passes. Commissioner Marlowe? I have one more on the property tax freeze.
Resolution 25-6-12, resolution approving an increase in the income limit for eligibility for the Property Tax Freeze Act.
Any discussion?
I screwed up.
Yes.
From last month while we ironed out the details, and I think yours and Mayor Jennings' help with getting this done like we needed to for, for our people.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Hall?
Can we just get on the record what that new limit is for the coming up fiscal year? Do we know that?
63,000.
I'll send it out to you tomorrow. How about that?
That'll work.
63,000 and something.
Thank you.
We have to take care of ourselves.
Yeah. I'll get that to you tomorrow. Any, any other comment? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Scruggs? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and a half.
Resolution passes. Any old business to come before this body? Commissioner Denton?
Just like that, just point of privilege, I guess, for my district.
Yes, sir.
My district is totally in the city, District 20, so pretty much the city trumps anything that happens with us. But we have a situation in our district that is causing terror, fear, and a lot of our seniors, adults, and then some folks who are even residents of a place called Ironwood that's been built. 186 units built on a small ground that the city should have never allowed to be built, and since it's been built, has been allowed to become Section 8, which originally was not supposed to. And so as a result, criminal element is finding some haven in there, coming in from other places, living there, bringing vouchers from Davidson County and things, and being able to find housing here. Also, we've had several shootings, and I want to thank the Sheriff's Department for being available to back up. I know it's a burden on the Sheriff's Department to have to utilize so much backup. We probably had 20 different vehicles over there the other night. So it's a constant thing, it's a daily thing. We're trying to fight it, and I'm fighting as a citizen, but that's about all I can do. Just want to inform folks in our district that we're trying to do that, and we have word that Chief Justice will be addressing us with, hopefully, a solution or some help for this problem this coming week. So just ask for your concern about this situation because people are living in fear. I patrol my yard like a security guard, and it just has to be that way, something all the time. And it's dangerous, and people are afraid, especially our people living on fixed incomes and people that don't travel a lot, and they're scared, those with little kids and children in our, in our neighborhood, and then some who are just captive in those apartments. So just want you to know that that problem exists and that I'm doing everything I can as an individual to try to fight back or try to get some eyes on that, and want to be aware of. That's why I'm really concerned about planning and how we build and where we build, because we have created a situation that should have never happened, and because it has happened, now we've got to police it, and now we've got to serve it, and now we have to fear it. So just want to remind you tonight to remember that district because we have no voice when it comes to the city other than our City Councilwoman, and I think, and I'm thankful that she is doing a good job to try to stand with us.
Any other old business? Any new business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
To adjourn.